All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Woodland Park City Council Meeting, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Suzanne, would you call the roll, please?
You bet. Mayor Case?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Gear?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey? Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Yep.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have some very special guests today. You'll see them shortly. Okay, item three ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. Item A, we have appointments to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I will look to Suzanne for this.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, as council has before them, we have four applications to the PRAB, to Parks and Rec's Advisory Board. There's currently five openings on this committee. And as council knows, we advertise these positions according to policy. And three of the applicants are incumbents, and those are Don DeZellum, Danuta Brown, and Jeff Webb. And then we have a new applicant, and his name is Ryan, and I don't want to butcher Ryan's last name. Where is Ryan?
Suzanne, what do you have in your arms? The one I had was whining very badly, so I gave the puppy back. We have some remarkable puppies with us tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
And Danuta is here via Zoom.
Okay. All right, well, let's start with Jeff, if you don't mind joining us at the podium. And if you would just, a short synopsis of who you are and why you want to serve on the board.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having me. My name is Jeff Webb. I'm currently the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I think, Don, are we on our, is this? I think, I think I may have completed my third term on Parks Board, so I've been at it a little while. But it's been an honor and a joy to be a part of. I'd love to continue to be a part of the Parks Board. My background, I'm a landscape architect and planner, and so I've worked for local government in the Parks Department, which is a good perspective to have. I've also worked developing parks, designing parks. So I have some background that I think is relevant. And I'd say that on my time on Parks Board, I think, you know, it's just been a joy to see the amount of success that the city has had and to play a role in that. We've completed the Parks Master Plan. The Cultural Center just opened, the Meadowwood Park Improvement Project's going on. Of course, the Avenger Open Space Acquisition, some really exciting things, and I think we have a really dynamic board. I think we have a phenomenal Parks and Recreation staff across the board. The Aquatic Center is, you know, truly almost world-class, and our parks are fantastic. So we have, we have a lot of great things, and it's really fun to be a part of. So happy to answer any questions. I don't know if that's enough of a background for you.
Thank you, Jeff. Counsel, do you have any questions for Jeff?
No, just thanks.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I would look for, do you want to do them individually?
I think we should do them all at once.
Okay.
If that's okay.
That's fine.
I'm very busy right now.
I'm so proud of you. I know the last time we had puppies, you weren't real crazy about the puppies crawling around on the diet, so. Don DeZellum, would you join us at the podium, please?
He is keater than your husband.
Good evening again.
Hello. Just tell us why, just whatever you'd like to share with the council.
I really am reapplying because I would like to continue working on the planning and the development of the Avenger Open Space Plan and the implementation of the Meadowwood Sports Complex Master Plan. And I echo a lot of the same sentiments as Jeff. For a town of this size, our Parks and Recreation Department is phenomenal. The staff that we have, the work that they get done, the acquisitions in such that we have made for the community to improve the quality of their recreational experience in life, I think is awesome. Kind of a little background on me. I actually got up to my junior year in college studying Recreation Administration. And where Jeff was talking about the dynamics of our board, where we have people that are good with the outdoors, with hiking, that's kind of their thing. It gets balanced out with people like me who are more of programming and that type of of focus. So we do have a dynamic board that works very well together. So, any questions for me?
I would second that, Don. I've served with you all for a while, and it's really the fun board.
Yes, it is.
Any questions, counsel, for Don? All right. Thank you, Don. And would you please bring Danuta up on the Zoom meeting and bring her up as a panelist, I think? No, isn't it, I don't know. Whatever you do. So we can talk to her.
I'm looking to see if I see Danuta.
Uh, yeah, probably so. Danuta, when you get, get the, you need to join us as a panelist and then unmute yourself, please. And then just whenever you're ready, just go ahead and tell us about you, please.
Hi, so my name is Danuta Brown. I've been now on the Parks Board for about four years. So this is going to be my third session or third term. I've joined originally when I, we came to Woodland Park because I was very much interested in outdoors and preserving the mountain feeling of the community. I started by working on the City Comprehensive Plan and then working on the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, or Master Plan. So far, I think, I feel that the board has been quite effective. We had quite a lot of successes, especially in the last pass session that I've been on. We've, we've worked on Avenger Open Space. I think we are making great progress toward creating a much more walkable city, connecting the trails, and realizing sort of the version of the mountain community than each one of us enjoys very much. I like being on the board. It's a very friendly board, and we cooperate quite well. And I'm ready to serve for another two years.
Thank you, Danuta. Counsel, do you have any questions for Danuta? All right. Thank you. Thank you to all three of you.
I don't think Mr. Ryan is present this evening, ma'am.
All right, well, we'll invite him back to our next meeting and consider him at that time. What you'd like to do, counsel? All right. So I would look for a motion, and we can take them one at a time if you'd like.
I'll just combine them. As the duly noted representative for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, like to take this opportunity to nominate for reappointment Don DeZellum, Danuta Brown, and Jeff Webb to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All right, Suzanne.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Can you administer the oath, holding a puppy?
I could probably, but I will give the puppy. I know. Can I ask everyone to join me up front here? Raise your right hand, you as well. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
Danuta, you can join them in taking the oath, if you would, please.
Just to keep you up for us, Danuta, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the State of Colorado, the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Woodland Park, that I will faithfully perform the duties of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the City of Woodland Park, upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service, all three of you. All right, that takes us to item B, Presentation and Proclamation Declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And this is going to be presented by Jody and puppies. Jody Maharas from Community Partnership.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for including us in your meeting tonight and for your service to our community. I'm Jody Maharas. I'm the CEO of Community Partnership Family Resource Center. You may have seen our sign. Before we get started on our presentation, I did want to quickly take advantage of this opportunity to address our community about something else that is also important and timely. As big changes continue to be made around how government funding is distributed to local communities, please be aware that our local nonprofit organizations are struggling with drastic reductions in funding cuts and the funding that they need to provide essential services to our communities. Teller County is blessed to have so many incredible nonprofit organizations that do important work, and much of it is behind the scenes. And this is what helps contribute to our community being so great to live in. Currently, nonprofits in Teller County are struggling to backfill widespread funding cuts. So we ask that you please do not wait till the end of the year to support your favorite nonprofit organizations. We need all the local support we can get right now. Thank you. That was the end of that. So, and I brought puppies too, so I could be forgiven for doing that. Onto the real reason we're here tonight. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Community Partnership Family Resource Center is participating in a month-long campaign to bring awareness to this issue. Symbols of this awareness campaign are the color blue and the pinwheels. Pinwheels symbolize bright childhoods that every child deserves to have. CP offers over twenty different evidence-based programs and services that strengthen families, build protective factors, create community, and reduce the risk of child abuse and neglect. One of these programs is CP's Parent Advisory Committee. CP's Parent Advisory Committee is made up of local parents and caregivers that participate in community partnerships, programs, and services, and they bring the perspective of families and parents in our community to our organization's leadership and help us kind of make all the decisions away, around the way we serve this community using that parent's voice and perspective. Our, our Parent Advisory Committee members are ambassadors out in the community for CP. They're building bridges and relationships with other families and caregivers in our community and encouraging them also to engage. And CP supports their leadership development so that they can bring this perspective to other community leaders as they're about to do tonight. So I just want to say before I turn it over to them that I could not be more proud, here, I always get choked up. I cannot be more proud of the commitment that these Parent Advisory Committee members make, not only to their own families and children, but to other families in our community as they strengthen and build up this place where we live. So on that, I'm going to turn it over to these two. They can introduce themselves and share their perspective with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kristen Woodward, and I have been a member of the PAC for the last four years, and I've lived in Teller County for over eight years. I have two boys that attend Summit Elementary in Divide. As a member of PAC, the perspective I offer is of a working mom, a volunteer in my kid's school, and a recurring volunteer coach with Parks and Rec for various sports, among other facets, as a member of this community. As a member of PAC, I have been able to provide caregiver insight and feedback to CP as they are always striving to be in tune with the needs of the community. I have personally participated in and benefited from many quality events and programs over the years, including a parenting class that gave my husband and me knowledge of child development and a common understanding to start from when facing challenging parenting situations. CP has also been a resource for me personally when I found myself recently supporting my brother through a custody battle and been appointed by the court as a supervisor of his parenting time. My sister and her four daughters are also victims of abuse. Helping my family to navigate these situations has felt hopeless and overwhelming at times. And I can see that the programs and resources provided by CP are crucial to parental resilience and family's success. Community Partnership Family Resource Center provides hope and support that I wish every community had access to. CP is a crucial connection point for families of all types to a multitude of resources from parenting classes, playgroups, social events, food boxes, and referrals to other services. Each of these offerings support the protective factors for families. I'm very proud and grateful to be a part of Community Partnership. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. Hello, my name is Santos Perez, and I'm a resident here in Woodland Park and also an active participant in the Parents' Teachers and Parent Advisory Committee and the Nurturing Families Program. At Community Partnership, programs like Parent As Teachers have helped to build up and establish a healthy relationship with my family and the community empowering me with the tools needed to succeed. While group classes such as nurturing families programs help us in a group setting, hearing, and advocating our experiences as parents to help us build on our strengths, all while learning and making new connections in our rural community. Since being introduced to Community Partnership, the amount of growth within myself and in my family is amazing, and I'm very thankful for all I've had access to. This all has helped me to have a brighter and more optimistic outlook for the future, both for my kids and the next generation of our community. Being a part of the Parental Advisory Committee, I've had the opportunity to volunteer at several events. All these events have helped me to bloom into an advocate and help give a voice to those who may feel unheard or scared to speak up. I help give strength to the others, and Community Partnership has helped me with this by building up my confidence and providing me with my own advocates and support groups, helping to make lifelong friends. I have found myself in certain situations in which I'm able to reflect these core values and build on my own character. Growing up in South Texas, my childhood was tumultuous, and now to see what opportunities I've had access to and are available is a blessing and should be commended. I look back with a smile, knowing that man I am today, after being involved with Community Partnership, is the man I wish I had to protect me when I was a child. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I don't have to. Lastly, we would just like to request that you consider a proclamation declaring that April two thousand and twenty-five is National Child Abuse, or our Communities' Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I just happen to have one.
Oh, really? I bet it's really well-written.
I'd like to read it into the record. Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas children are vital to our community's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets. And whereas the children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, and effective prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities that provide parents with social support and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and to nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential. And whereas all members of a community benefit from creating conditions that support strong and healthy families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing community. Now therefore, the City of Woodland Park, Colorado hereby proclaims April two thousand and twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Woodland Park, Colorado, and urges all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to improving the quality of life for all children and families, dated this seventeenth day of April two thousand and twenty-five. Thanks again, everybody. That was wonderful. That's the fun part of this job. Absolutely. All right, that takes us to item three C. Appointment to the City Council to fill a vacated City Council seat. At five o'clock this evening, the council met with each applicant. There were a total of seven interviewed this evening. Individually, the ones that were not at the podium were sequestered, and we interviewed them individually. So Suzanne, would you like to maybe share our process?
Sure, absolutely.
So that everyone knows how we're going to proceed.
As council decided a couple of weeks ago, we would post this vacancy, which we had, and we received applications up until noon last Wednesday. As mayor stated, we interviewed seven individuals this evening. The mayor and I met earlier, well, late last week, and we came up with the process on how we think things should go tonight. And so you can freely discuss whatever you'd like to discuss now. And then I have paper ballots that I will hand out to each of you that has your name on it, and you will individually decide who you would like for your first choice. We'll collect those ballots. If we have a clear winner, and a clear winner with a six-person council is four, so four people voting for the same person would be a clear winner. We will then administer the oath of office, and they will take their seat. Because we are a council of six, there's the probability sometimes that it could be a tie, and we have a process laid out for if it is a tie. If it's a tie, the mayor has decided that we would just take those two people. We would take another vote. You guys could talk about it. You could bring those two candidates up to answer questions again for you. If it's a tie again, then we can go to the traditional game of chance, which we've done many, many times and is allowed to be done by Colorado State statute. It is a common practice when tiebreakers are decided. And so I have ballots for that. We could put the names in a hat. You can also take time if you can't make the decision tonight. You can take time, and you can bring it back to a future council meeting if you'd like to, and that's pretty much the choices.
Is that agreeable to all of you? All right, let's give it a shot on the first vote. If you would, please, pass out the ballots.
Absolutely.
No paper, scissors, rocks?
Mayor Case, if I could, yes, we're passing those out. I just want to thank all the candidates. It was an incredible amount of talent in the letters of interest that we received. Part of my decision-making process are the fact that many of them have lived in the community for some time and some have not, and all of them have made the decision that they want to participate in the community experience on City Council. That's commendable, possibly maybe a little mental, but that's but my decision will be primarily based on those that have had experience with other community boards, commissions, and committees, and I just want to share that now with the candidates and with council.
Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make before we vote?
I would, yeah.
Go ahead, George.
I know we thanked you guys before individually, but I would love to thank you all as a group. Thank you for applying. I thought this is a particularly strong pool of candidates, so thank you, guys.
Agreed. I'd also like to thank everyone that interviewed as well, and if no one else has any comments, counsel, let's take our first vote.
One thing I'd like to do that I think I should have done earlier before I read these is I'd like to introduce the seven candidates. There were a lot of people that weren't here present. So if I can have you, as I call your name, stand up. Sean Marie, Mary Ward, Blaine Miller, Seth Bryant, Don Hoin, Don DeZellum, and Joy Pickett. That's why everyone gets to hear who it was. Okay, and I'm going to read these into the record. So the first vote is George Jones has picked Sean Nielsen. Kelly Case has picked Joy Pickett. Catherine Nakai has picked Seth Bryant. Carol Harvey has picked Seth Bryant. Steve Smith has picked Seth Bryant. And Jeffrey Gear has picked Seth Bryant. We have a winner. So. Counsel, I think it would be nice to have an official motion to appoint Seth Bryant to the City Council, and then I would be able to swear him in his oath of office.
I make a motion to appoint Seth Bryant to the vacant position on the Woodland Park City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, but I, yeah, I actually, I just want to thank everybody. This was not, this was not easy because everybody was great. Absolutely. I would encourage you, there is an election in a year.
Yes.
We need good candidates, and I'll tell you.
Lots of boards and commissions to apply for.
Yeah, and I would, I would echo what's been set up here. We had some really strong candidates, and I did not have a clue who I was going to vote for until I And I did not have a clue who I was going to vote for until I heard all of you this evening. And I want to commend you on your answers. You, you were very, very good. So don't give up and don't take this as a lose loss because there's plenty of opportunities.
So we have a motion and if I can have, take the vote.
Please, yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yep.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
I'd like, congratulations Seth.
Come join me Seth. And then we'll get a picture with you and your family. Okay, I'll have you face the council.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and raise your right hand. I Seth Bryant.
I Seth Bryant.
I'll have you turn this way because I see Kristen trying to take a picture. I Seth Bryant.
I Seth Bryant.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
State of Colorado.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of City Council member.
The duties of City Council.
For the city of Woodland Park.
City of Woodland Park.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Look forward to working with you. And before
Thank you, council.
Before you have, we have you seated. Can we ask your family to join you up here? We can get a photo. I know Kristen would like that. Seth, for tonight, we're going to just have you sit next to Councilmember Smith. Thank you.
Karen, is there an extra agenda back there that we could give to Councilmember Bryant?
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure you had something. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, council. Item three D is the sales tax update for February twenty twenty five and we'll listen to Erin present that to us this evening.
Here we go. All right. I have the sales tax update for February twenty twenty five, sales tax collections that we received in March of twenty twenty five. This is the first month, I've been here since August twenty twenty one, that I have seen us down year-to-date. So February year-to-date, we are down point three percent, down three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars over last year, February and January. We've received one million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars so far. And February was down, as we've seen this trend, it's been about five months in a row. We're up one month about five or six percent. We're down the next. A lot of that is related still to the sales tax system at the state level. But it's, it's not the explanation as to why we're actually down. I do think sales are a little bit soft. I think the remodel over at one of our big box stores might be affecting us a little bit there and yeah, so, so we are down a little bit there and we'll, we'll continue to watch that and keep a close eye on it. But we're down five and a half percent for the month of February, down thirty-two thousand over last year. And lodging tax continues to be significantly down as we're not surprised by. But we're down thirty-five percent year-to-date, down eleven thousand dollars versus last year. In the month of February was down forty-two percent. Okay, here's our, here's our chart for the last three years. And you can see it, it has been, it looks like since, yeah, November that we really started to see that, that swing happening each month. But February was definitely one of the worst months we've had year over year.
Interesting.
All right, any questions on that?
I, I have a question for you. Maybe it's more of a comment. In twenty twenty-two, twenty, and into twenty twenty-three, we had exceptional inflationary time. And as that started to ebb, as, as you, and I know we, we still have a, a level of inflation, but we also, we also will have some price decreases. And could it be that we're seeing maybe the same amount of volume, but just reflected differently in price, right?
When I look at the Aurora Denver liquid CPIU, we're not, it's not negative. So we haven't entered stagflation at the state level anyway. So I don't know that I could say that specifically, that I think that we've gone into a, a, a price resetting.
Okay.
Necessarily, yes, of course, some groceries have gone down in price. I mean, we were seeing some huge inflation on milk and eggs and some other staples. So I mean, maybe that's a little bit of the contribution, but it's hard to say that for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have any expectation at all that when, when Walmart is done with their remodel, that there will be a kind of a snapback? Or do we kind of see this as lost revenue?
I can't say.
Okay.
Yeah, we can hope to have a great summer.
They're starting to show up on the roads.
Yes.
Thank you, Erin. Anything else, council? All right. Item four additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda. Suzanne, do we have anything?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. That takes us to the consent calendar, council. We have three items, two sets of minutes, one on March, for the March tenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. One for the April third, twenty twenty-five City Council regular meeting. And then we have the approval of the March twenty twenty-five statement of expenditures. Is there anything that you have questions about or anything you want to pull off to have conversation about? If not, I'll look for a motion for all three.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as is.
I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion as second. Any further discussion? All right, Suze?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yep.
Bryant?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. That takes us to item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. And I would like to just bring to the attention of a memo that we got from Mr. Sbarnin's and his input, but I think this is
For nine A.
Nine A. Thank you. Forget I said anything. Do we have anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak to the council?
I have no one signed up. I have a lot signed up for nine A, but not this one.
All right, anyone else in the, in the audience that would like to address the council? All right, thank you. Item seven is unfinished business. We have nothing. Item eight is ordinances on initial posting and we have none of those either. Item nine is public hearings. Item A is approval of ordinance number fourteen ninety-four, series twenty twenty-five. And ordinance of the Woodland Park City Council amending Title eighteen of the city's municipal code by adopting a new chapter eighteen point eight zero regarding local regulation of natural medicine and amending chapter eighteen dot oh six regarding zoning definitions and chapter eighteen dot oh nine dot oh nine oh regarding table of permitted uses. This is a legislative item and I will look to the city attorney, Betsy, to brief the council.
Yes, I'll begin and then Planning Director Schmink may step in at the very end. So as you all know, in short, proposition one twenty-two was a voter-initiated measure that was adopted in twenty twenty-two. That permits the use of natural medicine as an additional tool to address mental health issues in the state. As this time, it means hallucinogen compounds, psilocybin and psilocin found in psychedelic mushrooms. Just as a reminder, a natural medicine healing center is a state licensed facility in which a properly licensed facilitator may provide and supervise natural medicine services to a participant that is twenty-one years or older. A natural medicine business other than a healing center can cultivate, manufacture, test, store, distribute, transport, transfer or dispense natural medicine. I want to make clear that a natural medicine business cannot sell natural medicine the same way that a marijuana dispensary can. It's not a recreational product in any way, shape or form. You can't go over counter, you can't buy it, you can't take it home. It, it, it's for medicinal purposes. And I know a lot of you already heard this, but the purpose is just to reiterate for anybody who hasn't heard all of this before. So as a reminder, the city cannot prohibit the establishment and operation of natural medicine healing centers and businesses within its boundaries. Nor can it adopt ordinances that are unreasonable or conflict with state law or regulation. As a reminder, the Colorado Department of Revenue handles the natural medicine business licensing aspect. The Colorado Department of Regulatory Agency handles the facilitator licensing aspect. So in short, what can the city do? It can regulate time, place and manner of operations of healing centers and businesses within the city of Woodland Park. Since we have a new council member present, just to be clear, if council makes a motion and chooses to adopt the ordinance either in the form in the packet or amended form, that means that it is decided to implement local regulation on, on the areas of time, place or manner. If the council doesn't adopt it, that means state regulations, that's it. So that's a bloody yes or no, depending on the motion and what goes. So if I might interrupt, that, that means that we would be giving up our local control portion of this.
Yes, mayor.
This law from the state. Yes, and again, I just think it would be helpful for the new member to understand just on this one particular aspect and obviously the audience and community as well. So on page forty-seven of the packet, I drafted a memo for you that basically you all gave me policy direction during a work session several months ago on what you would like to see in the local ordinance. So then, since it changed the land use code, it has to go to the planning commission. We held another work session there. It was, went very well. And there were only three changes, really, recommendations made to the initial policy direction. And I'm going to just go through those one by one. And then if Planning Director Schmink has anything else to say, she can join in or you all can move forward and ask me other questions. So first, the permitted location for natural medicine businesses. Council initially went with Castle Rock and how some other communities have been doing, which was placing those businesses other than healing centers in the heavy service, commercial, light industrial district only. However, we had some comment and then after much discussion as well by planning commission, they decided that it was appropriate to consider allowing natural medicine healing centers to engage in the cultivation of natural medicine to use in their practice. The reason for that being, and I believe if I get this comment incorrect, somebody can correct me who spoke at the last time. But I believe at this point in time, there's only maybe three cultivation, manufacturing, testing businesses even approved, not in Woodland Park's area. And if it was only in heavy, the light industrial, say, area, I mean, operating as a separate business. And so if you have state law permits a natural medicine healing center to also cultivate. And so it would allow the practitioner to kind of, I guess, save on costs and have more readily available access. So to my understanding, that was the comment and why that was made. Hours of operation, I've seen them all across the board, across the state. The hours that were decided upon were seven AM to ten PM. And that was just to really give at least, you know, two or three sessions a day to some of the practitioners. Lets people who maybe, you know, if it's during a normal work week and that's when they can go in, gives them a little more time to get in there. And then also it relifted, I, I believe, I can't recall what we had originally, but this was just to allow it seven days a week. Finally, public view of natural medicine businesses and natural medicine services. The only thing that changed there is the, the regulations around, you can't just go in an open field and consume natural medicine through a facilitator for medicinal purposes, however. And I, you, the way this was recommended is that, say essentially you had an atrium, I can't think of a better word. I don't know how many atriums Woodland Park has. But say you had an atrium and the rest of the parameters regarding like screening, security, all of those things are met. Then you could have an outdoor experience so long as it is shielded from public view. So those are the three things that were changed from the policy decision you all, guidance you all had given me. Otherwise, I can, if, Planning Director, do you have anything to add to that?
With regard to location and the addition of a natural healing medicine businesses other than the healing centers, that ability to cultivate the product. While the planning commission was open and is recommending to potentially allowing that into additional zone districts. They put some, some cautions around there, so it does get additional scrutiny. So in that use table in the ordinance, you see definitely it as a permitted use and that essentially light industrial zone. But it would be a conditional use permit required to potentially establish a natural medicine business other than a healing center in both community, commercial and service commercial zone districts. So it, that's also a place where the, the healing center is potentially located as a permitted use. So if somebody was coming in and wanting to do both aspects of that, it would go through that conditional use permit process and subject to both planning commission review and recommendation and ultimately decision by city council. So that's, that's what, how that would then get looked at.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. We discussed that and I appreciate you stepping in there.
That's sure.
Very helpful.
All right.
Carol, you just like give a question? No.
Okay, then I have questions.
Okay.
When, I, I'll start with that aspect of what the planning commission had recommended. When you say a natural medicine business other than a healing center, are you talking? What, explain what that would look like. I thought healing centers were all that we could address in, in time, place and manner.
To my knowledge, as local control, we're allowed to address time, place and manner of all aspects of these types of businesses. And in definitions, our ordinance defines natural medicine business is any of the following entities licensed under the Natural Medicine Regulatory Act, including a natural medicine healing center and natural medicine cultivation facility, a natural medicine products manufacturer and a natural medicine testing facility or another licensed entity created by the state licensing authority.
Can you point out in the ordinance where they were talking about cultivation in particular, what does that look like? Is that a field? Is it a little dark room? What does it mean?
So as I, I know, well, it's for personal cultivation, but if it's a conditional use, I, we could potentially limit the space in which.
Yes, it would the, that would be part of what the applicant would be proposing is exactly what, how much of a building, what, what does this look like? And we had testimony at the planning commission hearing. It was that or the work session that that cultivation is potentially done in a very small footprint, which is part of why that there were folks testifying or requesting that this potentially be set up to, to be able to have both cultivation and the, the healing centers locate in the same location. So this ordinance creates that possibility for at least that review and consideration by the, the planning commission and city council.
And so that would only be under a conditional use, not a permitted use?
If they were happening together in those, or have, even if it wasn't together. If they were wanting that, of that cultivation facility in those two districts, I've mentioned, community commercial and service commercial.
I think I can clarify something as well. So as, as she explained just now, a natural medicine healing center is technically also a natural medicine business. The reason why I separated them out is because a natural medicine and healing center, it's just analogy purposes, I guess. It, it's essentially, say it's just a doctor's office, you go in and you take it, where the cultivation is that. And so part of that is that, you know, the reason I've been seeing or noticing on state is that we don't necessarily, well, we, the community or whoever comments typically does not want to only be able to receive the services and, and the outskirts of town or whatever. Maybe it's, you know, the, a lot of the reason behind it would be, let's just have it like a normal doctor's office. Let's have the, that occur, you know, in the commercial business or wherever we have it. And that's why they're separated out those way. Plus, we want to put ours, you know, on the healing center. So that's what the policy was.
Well, so I guess my question is, could a cultivation center occur outside of the healing center? Could there be a, a different facility? And how do we address that in the use table?
I, I might be able to help with that. So the natural medicine healing center, the analogy of the doctor's office, that would be a permitted use in neighborhood commercial, community commercial and service commercial. Um, if they wanted to cultivate, that would fall under, um, item two, natural business, natural medicine businesses. Other than natural medicine healing centers. And that would be the cultivation side, and they would require a conditional use permit to operate in community, commercial, and service, commercial. It would be considered a permitted use in the heavy service, commercial, light, industrial, which is basically four spots. So, uh, did, does that, does that clarify?
Yeah, it, it sure does. Um, so if, uh, what I'm, I'm trying to envision, what is the footprint of cultivation look like? Is it an interior growth or is it exterior or is it both?
It's interior.
It's interior.
Yeah, it's interior under controlled conditions.
Mm-hmm, but then both state and local regulation.
Okay, and then, um, I, I've got two additional questions. Why did the planning commission not consider, uh, central business district as permitted use?
I don't recall if some of that was guidance from city council or if that was just at the planning commission level. But they went back and looked at the intent of those various zone districts. And the thought was that central business district really is more, um, uh, tourist oriented. Restaurants, smaller shops, those kind of things versus, um, these types of facilities, seeing them more as, uh, personal service oriented. Uh, like other medical facilities and such, that, um, they just thought that was a, a better use of our downtown central business district zone. Versus, uh, what this use is and who it services.
However, it was brought to my attention that we do, it is a permitted use for a medical office in the C B, in the central business district.
Yes, but this is a separate carve-out and not classified as part of one of those. Um, and I think there, if I recall, there was also some discussion about, um, the, the. Clients comfort level in terms of where you go to receive services.
Okay, makes sense.
Privacy, um, that they seem to think was potentially more available in those other commercial districts versus the, the, the central business district.
Sorry, Carol.
Oh, no, I, I, it had, well, I, we had a, someone who wrote, wrote in and asked that question and I was curious. Uh, and then my last question for now is, um, when you talk about excluding public view of the. Application of, of the therapy, what was the, the discussion in the planning commission? You talked about an atrium or a courtyard. How, how well would that be protected from public view? An atrium seems kind of like a big glass, you know, people who live in glass houses kind of thing.
I, I don't know that atrium is necessarily the best word.
Yeah.
Probably is, is better. Um, do you know which provision that is?
Yes, it's eighteen point eight oh point oh seven oh, it's on page forty-four of your packet. And that regulates local regulation anyways, I didn't near state, but public view of natural medicine businesses and natural medicine services. So all doorways, windows, other openings shall be located, covered, or screened in a manner. To prevent view into the interior from the exterior or somewhere on public area, um, applicable to, the, uh, excuse me. Subject to applicable city design standards, and then all activities of natural medicine businesses and services shall court indoors. Unless access to an outdoor area fits with those.
Okay, got it. So in other words, if it was an atrium, they would have to have blinds.
Yes.
Okay. That's all for right now.
Now, are we, are we able to amend the ordinance to include the CBD as, um, a permitted use? For number one, the natural medicine healing center?
Yes, if you have a majority, it makes a motion second majority, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel, before I open the public hearing? Right, then I will open the public hearing portion of, the public comment portion of this public hearing. And do we have anyone signed up online?
Um, well, we have a whole bunch in the audience.
Okay, so let's start there.
Our first speaker is Eli Varney.
If you would just share your full name and your city of residence, please.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, my name is Eli Varney. I currently live here in Woodland Park. So first, thank you, council, mayor. I appreciate my time to be here. Uh, just quick background, I'm a licensed professional counselor, uh, for the past eight years, and I've been in the military for twenty years. Graduate of Army Ranger School, Sapper Leader Course, and two deployments in combat zones. My specialty as an LPC is for trauma survivors. I'm currently trained in EMDR, internal family systems, brain spotting. As well as other somatic, uh, therapies. For my clients that I've currently worked with, uh, worked through, uh, journeys and therapeutic dose sessions. Um, they have gotten off anti-anxiety medication as well as antidepressant medication. Uh, multiple studies that have come out recently have shown that there's really some negative long-term effects of antidepressants and anti-anxiety. And so this is a good, uh, therapeutic option for those, uh, that are looking to get off that medication. John Hopkins over the past twenty-four years has shown zero negative side effects for, uh, this medicine. Uh, I want to share just a couple examples with clients. So I have one client that, uh, has diminishing OCD tendencies. Over the past three therapeutic, uh, sessions we have done together. And we've been working for, together for a year, and over the past three sessions, those OC tendencies are basically gone. Quotes from clients who have, uh, gone through psilocybin journeys that I, they've given me is, I have my life back. I'm able to shoot my rifle again without having suicidal ideations. And most impactful response is, I don't want to die anymore. I, I humbly requa- request the, the coun- the council and the mayor, as you're looking at this, please make sure that we stick with the seven days a week. Seven AM to ten PM. The main reason is that healing doesn't happen eight to five, Monday through Friday. A lot of times people need that extra time, they can't get off work, and this is an opportunity for them to get their life back. Uh, thank you again for this opportunity for Colorado and the people of Woodland Park to heal. Uh, this is a tool that has personally helped me heal from my own trauma, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to share this medicine with others.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker is Brian Wilson.
Alright, Brian, if you would just share your full name and your city of residence, please.
My name is Brian Wilson. I live here in Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm a retired army guy. I did twenty-two years. Um, about sixteen of that was in special forces. I did fourteen deployments, eight to combat. I got about, uh, just shy of sixty months in combat total over, over the whole twenty-two years or whatever. Um, and like this stuff works, like it does, like, uh. When you do that enough, um, and you, you learn to thrive in that environment. It doesn't really like match up in this environment when you come back and, and there's a lot of, um. The stuff that goes there doesn't go here, you know, you can't control a situation with aggression and anger. And violence like you can there, and it, and it just becomes such a habit after a while that it's hard to break that habit. And then you can with, you know, years and years of therapy and, and medicine and stuff. But like, uh, you just, this medicine works. Like it changed my life, like it really did, like it changed, uh, the way I. Relate to my kids, it like, I, it's, uh, it does, it gives you your life back. And, uh. So, yeah, that's all. I was getting up here to, to give you that whole story. I still got a minute left. Um, yeah, I don't have anything else to say. Just, thanks.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Our next speaker is Jeff Gallup.
Again, Jeff, if you'd just give us your full name and city of residence.
Hi, I'm Jeff Gallup. I'm actually a resident of Colorado Springs, um, but prior to that, uh, did live in Woodland Park for about ten years. Um, and I guess I'm, I'm here in support of the ordinance, um, primarily because. I'm, I'm not a former vet, I'm not a first responder, just a regular guy, but I know about a year ago, I sort of. Realized it over about a two and a half year window, I lost both my parents, two uncles, an aunt, and of course, our family dog, right? At the same time, and, um, and I thought I was dealing with it well, um, but came to realize I was really feeling pretty stuck. Um, and I needed to do something different and, uh, Jason is a good friend of mine and, and a counselor and someone that, that, you know. Could facilitate these journeys and so I, I did do one back in November and, uh. It, it was life-changing. Actually, I, I, coming out of that weekend, um, felt like a complete reset and reboot. And put me in a much better place, so, and I want to echo, um, what Brian says. I think it's important to have the time to get that treatment as open as possible for me, working, you know, being part of a family. Being able to do that on a Friday evening and having a weekend to sort of do the integration work, cause that's a very important piece of it. Um, was critical, so just wanted to share that with you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Dalton Lane.
Dalton, if you'd give us your full name and city of residence, please.
Yeah, I'm Dalton Lane. I'm from Colorado Springs, uh, although I did live up here for twenty years, raised my four kids up here. Um, did nineteen years in the fire service up here and just retired in November.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I've been in the psilocybin space for about five years. I currently help lead group journeys up here in Teller County. Um, along with some of the other people in this crowd. Uh, psilocybin saved my life, um, my kids have a dad because of psilocybin. It's what I'm gonna be doing, uh, post-fire career, and I intend on working with first responders in group ceremonies. Um, having said that, I wanna second what Eli said, um, the nature of the fire service, ambulance, and police. Um, it's just not gonna work to have, uh, eight to five Monday through Friday, um, shift work, you just can't get around that. And so we definitely want to be available to everybody and not close anybody out because of, uh, those ordinances. Um. I've got more I could say, but I think you're gonna probably hear a lot more of the same stuff, so my biggest thing is I just wanna make sure that. I'm able to serve the population I care about and that we're not too restricted and that we are able to have those groups come into our town. And I would love for Woodland Park to be kind of that beacon on the hill. This is an emerging field right, right now. And, um, I think that Woodland Park could be known as that place where first responders and vets come to be healed, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
We have Lauren Attenaro. Oh, it's just the handwriting I can't get, sorry.
Lauren, if you'd share your full name and city of residence, please.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Lauren Atencio. I'm a licensed pres- or, sorry. I'm a resident currently of Colorado Springs. Um, I am a licensed professional counselor as well as a licensed addictions counselor. Um, I work very closely with trauma, um, and specialize in addiction. Um, and first and foremost, I just want to say that I have been a witness to healing, um, in a way that I feel. Is not as attainable in your typical therapeutic space utilizing these plant-based, plant-based medicines. Um, and I have also journeyed and it has made incredible changes in my life. I've struggled with anxiety and depression throughout my entire life, and I feel like I finally got my life back. Um, I really want to start with kind of the professionalism aspect of what we do. Uh, professionalism when working with plant-based medicine as a licensed therapist requires deep integrity, presence, and ethical vigilance. It means maintaining clear boundaries, honoring client autonomy, and upholding informed consent at every stage of the process from preparation to integration. Therapists must operate within their scope of practice while navigating the unique emotional, psychological, and spiritual terrain that these medicines. Can offer and open. This includes being trauma-informed, culturally humble, and grounded in evidence-based practices. While also respecting the sacred nature of the work. Ultimately, professionalism in this field is about creating a safe, non, non-judgmental and supportive space where healing can unfold responsibly. And respectfully. Um, I want to just say a little bit about preparation and integration. It is a primary part of utilizing plant-based medicines. Um, preparation starts with a formal evaluation. We start, uh, in a way to ensure that cli- the client is suitable fit for the space. We're never gonna bring somebody in that we deem is not appropriate for this space. And, um, we do a very formal kind of evaluation to make sure that that's done. Um, we also ask that client, clients have their own therapist or at least a strong primary support system in place. Um, and participate in preparatory meetings to build trust, clarify the process, and ask any questions. Setting a clear intention is key going into this process. I'm running out of time. Um, so I just want to kind of make it known that integration afterwards is one of the primary things. And so including that in a healing center and allowing the space for people to integrate this work into their lives is important. Um, we will uphold all training requirements for the natural medicine facilitators, which is outlined in DORA. Um, I'm gonna kind of skip over since I'm running out of time. I wanted to kind of note a couple things. The safety protocol is under Prop one twenty-two, um. There is regulatory authority, so DORA is watching everything we do. There's facilitary tri- facilitator training and certification, um. And controlled substance use, adults aged twenty-one and over may possess.
Continue.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, then. Okay, so adult, we will never work with anyone under the age of twenty-one, and it is really important to note that clients will never leave the facility. With the medicine, that is never an option, that will never happen. Um, part of the requirements under Prop one twenty-two is, uh, safe, safe storage of the medicine. So the clients will not even have access to that either. Um, I also wanted to note that with transportation, every participant has, they has, have to sign a document stating that their transportation plan. For after their journey, no one can leave without a plan of transportation. Um, and that, that also includes, like, you can't even bike away from the facility. You, you cannot leave the facility on your own in any way, shape, or form. Um, and then just a couple things I also wanted to just outline is that we will. Every step of the way, ensure every client fully understands the nature of the medicine, what we are doing in the healing center. How we are working with the medicine and how we are working therapeutically throughout the process. Again, I just wanted to state that the journey itself is important, but the preparation and the integration are the most important parts. Having a team of therapists or healers or, you know, supportive individuals within the space will help healing happen. And everything is done under the trauma-informed care. Um, and we respect boundaries, autonomy, and any somaticist responses or responses that go into place. Um, it's important also to note that there is, it's not non-exploitation, there's no dual relationships. Everything is very ethical within the process in order to ensure safety. Um, and make sure that the client is getting exactly what we need. Do not want to move into a space of re-traumatization at any point in time. Um.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, that's it? Okay, cool.
I appreciate you.
Yeah.
And this, next speaker is Beth Suckrill.
Beth, please, if you'd share your name and city of residence when you come up?
Thank you.
My name is Beth Suko. My husband and I have lived in Woodland Park for the past seven years, and we have a three-year-old daughter. I've been a licensed social worker for the past nineteen years and I work in the Springs. In May of twenty twenty-four, I had the privilege of attending, experiencing the profound effects of natural medicine. Specifically psilocybin for the first time. Throughout my career, I've been passionate about mental health services and the accessibility and diversity of those services to everyone. I've spent my career advocating and supporting for individuals' access to mental health services. And removing the stigma and shame that sadly often accompany it. What makes natural medicine so profound and effective is the access it gives you to your own experiences, your traumas, and repressed memories. It allows you a front row seat to your life's experiences. But it doesn't end there. Natural medicine is only as powerful as the integration and support. That follows in the days and months after initial treatment. My psilocybin journey began in May of twenty twenty-four, and each week since, for nearly a year, I've met with my therapist. To continue the work and talk therapy. I believe in natural medicine, plant-based medicine, as a tool and an absolute gift it affords to individuals seeking to better their quality of life. There are profound effects that this one experience has afforded me. I am a better mother, partner, social worker, and member of the community because of this experience and the ongoing internal work. I'm better able to show up for myself, my family, and most recently, the community in the form of a hospice volunteer. I know that holding space for the sacred end-of-life experience is only possible. Because of my experience with natural medicine and with therapy. I was also lucky enough to be able to access this medicine. But our access to diverse mental health services deserves more than just luck. I have attended the Teller County Mental Health Suicide Prevention Symposium twice over the recent years. And I've heard the community's call for additional services and the need for support. I stand before you advocating for the community's access to optimal mental health services led by Jason. I stand before you advocating for the community's access to optimal mental health services led by Jason and his team of knowledgeable professionals. I believe Woodland Park has an incredible opportunity to be a leader in the industry of natural medicine to support its military families, veterans, first responders and everyday citizens. I'm proud to be a part of this community and to see firsthand the passion and leadership of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Steve Lee.
Steve, if you'd just give us your name and, we'll name and city of residence, please.
Hello, I'm Steve Lee, Woodland Park. I just have three things I want to say. I want to be clear again that the combination of state law and local ordinance, ordinance ensures that healing centers are not like a dispensary or a liquor store where individuals leave with any product to take whenever, wherever they choose and to consume wherever they choose. It is not like a bar where people might choose to leave under the influence of the medicine. It is like an outpatient center where participants in desperate need of help can come to receive a treatment that continues to prove it, its profound value in addressing trauma, depression, depression, phobias, negative beliefs and a host of other issues that we face. Number two is, communities thrive when we find ways to help and serve each other. And I think a strong community is one where some individuals decide this is what the community needs. We heard that today with the community partnership. And when, when somebody stands up and says, this is what I think the community needs to serve either with a product or a service or some way to help their, their fellow citizen. We are a stronger community when each of us are free to pursue our passions to deliver the goods and services that others needs, that others need. Many in this room have seen the value of natural medicine and are deeply passionate about making Woodland Park a place where people can be helped. The third thing I want to share is that Woodland Park wins when it provides safe, fair and open opportunities for businesses to thrive and contribute to the tax base, the wage growth and the common good projects of the town. This ordinance, I think, strikes a fantastic balance with both safeguards to the public good and sufficient operating guidance to permit healing centers to succeed. Conversations with healing centers in Oregon have made it clear that especially during the early stages of psilocybin acceptance or licensure, it is very difficult for healing centers to succeed and we hope to be, to be one of them. But we, it will be challenging and so the hours are important. The location, as it's been described in the current ordinance, are also important and we look forward to to giving it a go. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
And then our final speaker signed up is Jason Friesman.
Welcome, Jason. If you'd give us your full name and city of residence. I'll quit saying that.
Jason Friesman. I live, uh, Woodland Park still. I've not moved. I really, honestly, I want to take just a moment and really thank the council for your deliberations on this. Betsy, I thank you for your help in this and, and the planning commission. It's been, uh, it's been amazing to kind of watch how this process works, to be honest with you. I've never been able to be a part of this process before. And it's been deeply powerful, I think, for me. And in some ways, if this ordinance passes, I feel like we're at the starting line then of how, how do we get this up and going? As has been mentioned, we've spoken, Dalton and I particularly, oh, with Steve as well, we've spoken to programs in Oregon and nobody's doing this to get rich, I can tell you that. The, any, any restriction, like the, the fees are onerous, the licensure is onerous, the classes are onerous. And any further restriction on business hours and days of operation are going to be quite limiting in our opportunities, I think, to be successful as a business. I think about half the programs in Oregon are under financial duress, half are thriving, so that's good news. When I looked last at how many healing centers had been applied for in Colorado, there are twenty-one. And they're in Denver and they're in Boulder and they're in Fort Collins. And there's one in Aspen and Breckenridge and West Cliff. There's nothing in Colorado Springs. There's nothing in Manitou. There's nothing up here. And we live amongst, I don't know, I think estimates are around a hundred thousand veterans in between El Paso and Teller County. And as you've heard from some of these other people tonight, at, at some personal risk of themselves to come and speak publicly about their private experiences, I take that really seriously. Wasn't expecting this part. But it's been powerful. And I don't want to be here. I, I think I mentioned that the first time I talked to council, I had no intention of doing this ever. Until I watched the power that is with it and it's hard work. It'd be way easier just to be a counselor in an office, talking to people about their problems for years, on end, an hour at a time. And that doesn't work very well. It works a little bit. But it doesn't work like this works. And so with that, I do ask, uh, again, I've just really respected this process and I do ask the, the city council pass the ordinance as it's written. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Yes. Jason, Carol has a question for you, if you don't mind, please. Jason.
Carol, I figured it'd be you.
Help me understand the cultivation side. It sounds like that, that would be very unique.
To be honest with you, I'm, I'm not super interested in the cultivation side. For me personally, I'm much more interested in this other side.
And also talk to me about, I, I believe seven days a week is, is an appropriate or appropriate section of, of the ordinance. Explain to me why you would think seven to ten PM, seven AM to ten PM would be the optimal operating period for a healing center?
Yeah, great question. So the, the ordinance says when people take a macro dose of psilocybin mushrooms, they have to be in the center for five hours. And so, operating eight to five automatically limits that to kind of one cohort, if you will, during the day and it gives no leeway because it is still up to our discretion on when people leave as well. There's, there's actually a process. It isn't just a time thing, but like we have to kind of assess that people are able to leave with according to their transportation plan and as Lauren mentioned, people cannot drive or, or use their own transportation to leave. And so, as open as that can be, if we, I'd love to have the opportunity to provide at least two cohorts at any given day, the opportunity to partake in the medicine. Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Harvey, I think it's Mr. Wilson, would like to answer your question on cultivation.
Oh, okay, great.
So cultivation's, it's all inside? Like, what do you want to know about it?
Well, that was my question.
Yeah, it's all inside. It's, it's very, it's got to be super, super controlled and, and all, everything has to be controlled or they won't, the mushrooms won't grow. They'll just die or the mycelium won't take hold or, there's so many like steps to it. It's not like growing marijuana where you put a seed in the ground and it grows. Like, there's a lot that goes into cultivating mushrooms and it's actually like a whole.
Is there now a state protocol that controls?
So, yeah, so there is, so there's, and I'm not sure about the, um, the special whatever it was, but so there's two. So you can get a small cultivation license and with that you can store up to like seven hundred and fifty grams, I think. And then, and then a large cultivation license, which is up to like five kilos or for, for the big companies who are going to do this for who, whatever. But the small, the small ones, you can only store up to seven hundred and fifty grams. You still have to fall under all the state guidelines, like the state will still come out. You have to have storage. You have to have security. You have to have cameras. You have to have all that stuff for it and it's, it's highly regulated, just like anything else.
But is it permitted now though for an individual to grow their own?
Yes, you can grow it on your own now. You just can't sell it. You, you can give them away or you can't sell them.
Thank you.
You can give them away, okay. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to address the council in this public hearing? All right. Seeing no one, I will close this public comment portion of the public hearing. And council, I'd look to you for further discussion or a motion.
I have a question and I don't know, Betsy, if this is to you or maybe to Erin, but the we, you know, we hear highly regulated. But by, and, and sure by the state, but does, is the state going to send somebody out and they, do they do inspections or how does that work or, or is the city taking this on?
So this, the state has the ability to do that and if you see something locally that's a problem, you need to contact the state licensing. They bring down, they have the ability to revoke, grant, suspend, do a hearing.
Okay.
Fine, all of it.
The city?
No.
We're not doing anything. And then you mentioned the two governing bodies, DORA and what was the other one?
Colorado Department of Revenue, CEDOR.
CEDOR, okay, thank you. And CEDOR was the, the cultivation guy? They were?
Yes, they handle the business licensing aspect of it. DORA, all they do is they just give the facilitators the licensing, the training. So if, if cultivated, is it sold to practitioners and healing centers or is it just given to them?
No, it's likely sold.
I believe the cultivation, I'm sorry, that's different. Thank you. And it really doesn't have Yeah, and these are, regulations are probably combined two hundred and twenty-two pages or so, I mean.
Yeah, so the, the cultivators can, will sell to the healing centers and the healing centers provide the, the medicine for the journey or themselves. So the facilitators likely won't even ever touch the medicine itself either. There's an extra license for that as well.
Thanks, Jason. And, and just remember again, you know, with the cultivation centers, they can't sell them. I can't walk in and say, hey.
No, 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 that's very
You can't do that. It has to be through a licensed facilitator only for the purpose of. I, I tried to grow truffles once. I can't imagine this is easy. Yeah, and I also, one, one other point I think that could be helpful for clarification with the personal cultivation aspect of it as you were discussing, it's actually, uh, right now by regulation or law, I can't remember which one, but it's a twelve by twelve space. So you can either do it one twelve by twelve plot. Personally, cultivation centers are different, but when you're saying personal cultivation, or you can have like a three by four plot or whatever to make up a twelve by twelve. But, um, at a commercial, at the commercial level, where is that occurring now in the state? I mean, it's like we're setting ourselves up to be a commercial center for cultivation. No, because the way that you have it set up right now is if you want to do a natural medicine business, which other than a healing center, which is a cultivation facility, as the ordinance is currently written, you're only permitted to have that occur in Woodland Park in the heavy, the light industrial. Under conditional. It, no, that's permitted by right, but that's only like three or four plots on this map.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to permit, permit, right, but if you want to do a conditional use to allow the cultivation, manufacturing, whatever within the other areas that we had, that could be expanded that way. But the only way it places permitted by right right now is heavy surface light, commercial, industrial. And if she thinks that, yeah, please.
Yeah, I want to back up the bus just a skosh into the dimensions you were talking about, twelve by twelve through by
That's personal.
That's only for personal.
Those are feet? As opposed to inches.
Thank you.
Sure we understood, twelve by twelve, twelve feet by twelve feet.
But that's only, eh, thank you, and that's for personal use. It's, it's different for others.
So, per Arnie's email, it doesn't sound like there's any appetite up here to amend the ordinance to add the CBD as a permitted use for Okay, I just, I Yeah, no, that's, I mean, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, in that area, I, I don't think, you know, I, I liked what Jason said and, and I respect the planning commission. The, they've done a lot of the homework. I think we just take it forward as it is.
No, no, that's fine. I, I just wanted to, given Arnie's email and the point he made, I just wanted to ask, that's all.
No, thank you.
Then.
Any other discussion or questions, council? All right, I'll look for a motion, please.
Then, I'll make a motion for the approval of ordinance fourteen ninety-four, series two thousand and twenty-five. In ordinance of the Woodland Park City Council amending Title eighteen of the city's municipal code by adopting a new chapter eighteen dot eight zero regarding local regulation of natural medicine and amending chapter eighteen dot zero six regarding zoning definitions and chapter eighteen dot zero nine dot zero nine zero regarding table of permitted uses.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to say, I just wanted to thank everybody who came and spoke at the podium today. That was very helpful. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Suzanne?
Thank you. Nakai?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yep.
Bryant?
Yes.
Peace?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations. Thanks for everything. And your help getting us knowledgeable.
So I just had a side note question. When does the moratorium expire? The moratorium expires on the adoption of the ordinance. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to go, okay. No, yeah, I included that in there. Oh, I missed, sorry, I missed that. I read the table. I missed that, sorry.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item nine B, approval of ordinance fourteen ninety-five, series two thousand and twenty-five. And ordinance of the Woodland Park City Council amending Title seventeen and Title eighteen of the Woodland Park Municipal Code concerning subdivisions and zoning to address water availability necessary for future development and expansion of uses and impact. And I see Karen at the podium.
So, good evening. Thank you for your consideration this evening. The purpose of this ordinance is to ensure water availability is a factor or criteria or requirement that gets considered with certain land use applications, which propose new development or expand a use or an impact. This ordinance was prepared at the request of several council members that they had made this through the city manager who in turn directed our city attorney's office to prepare an ordinance. The initial draft was reviewed by the city's utility advisory committee and they were comfortable with what was being proposed around creating these additional criteria to make sure that this was part of the conversation in front of everybody when a, a land use application was being considered. And so, in our current regulations, when you're talking about a conditional use permit, a site plan or a special use permit, there is already language in there that talks about or making sure the review criteria being that the proposed development shall be designed, constructed and maintained with adequate water supply, wastewater disposal, solid waste disposal, air quality protection methods and surface water drainage. So some very basics around developing a property. That was already there, but there's other applications that get reviewed where this wasn't a real obvious thing that needed to be talked about or discussed. So that would be an instance of somebody was wanting to change the zoning on a piece of property, regardless of whether you're going from something that's a lower density to a higher density of residential units or back the other way. This would be a criteria to consider what, what does this do to our water resources? So rezoning's in a time when that would happen. If somebody's wanting to amend like a PUD development plan, you know, for that PUD zone, it would be part of the conversation then. It would be part of the conversation around subdividing property. And, you know, right now, you guys are probably quite aware, given that Kip's done this recently, talked about the city's tap management plan and how very tightly all of our residential taps are controlled, evaluated, considered, counted. All that's, it's very, very tight consideration. And there is definitely interest. I've heard it from members of the planning commission, other folks in the community where they would like to see that level of control happen around our commercial water uses. But to get to that kind of an ordinance requires detailed studies, consideration, time, money, resources. So that's a heavy lift to get to that level of regulation that ultimately will serve Woodland Park probably very well for a long time. So in the meantime, this ordinance acts as the bridge to make sure that that water conversation is part of every land use application very clearly in front of you all. And so, there, the ordinance itself that went to planning commission, they had their work session back on February twenty-seventh and looked at everything that was proposed. There was a couple of small language tweaks that they made. But otherwise, the only big change that they came back with that's been incorporated was even though we already have this more broad criteria related to site plans, conditional use permits and special use permits, we want to make sure this is forefront in our conversations. So they asked that an additional, very clear criteria be added to each of those application types. And that's what's reflected in the ordinance in front of you. And that criteria reads, the proposed development shall require approval of the city that connection and availability of a water source exists that is sufficient to serve the needs of the proposed uses and structures. So that was part of their recommendation and during their public hearing they held on March thirteenth. Um, one of our planning commissioners, uh, it's reflected in the minutes, brought up. Uh, that there are a number of things within the city's comprehensive plan that support this very ordinance. As well as the other ordinances uh they ultimately would like to see happen for this this community. So within the water and wastewater section of the comprehensive plan, there's a very clear goal, uh, objective and some action items. That uh this ordinance uh addresses and works with. So with that, uh, planning commission uh has made a recommendation and brought this for ordinance forward to you. I'm asking you to please adopt it. Questions?
Thanks, Karen, counsel. Questions of Karen, of staff?
No, I'm quite happy with it.
All right. Thank you, Karen.
I actually did appreciate the planning commission's addition to it as well.
All right, I'm going to open the public comment portion of this public hearing. And if there's anyone, no? Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? All right, seeing nothing, I will close the public comment portion of this public hearing and look to the council for further discussion or a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen ninety-five, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance. Of the Woodland Park City Council amending title seventeen and title eighteen of the Woodland Park Municipal Code concerning subdivisions and zoning. To address water availability necessary for future development and expansion of uses and impact.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, counsel. Any further discussion? Suzanne?
Thank you. Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. That closes that portion of our meeting. Item ten is new business and we have none, which takes us to reports. Um, mayor's report, I would like to share a few things with you all. Um, this morning, we had the state of the city at the cultural center. And we had a great attendance. It was really delightful to see so many people there. Debbie, thank you so much for putting that together. And uh, we had a great time and and great conversations, so wanted to share that with you all. Um, seed up projects, I think we got an update from the chief today. I'm sure you all have seen the work on sixty-seven. Which will last into November. And we will have lane closures and inconveniences, but in the long run. They're going to repair and and put all that drainage underground and improve uh do new servicing. New curb and gutter, I believe is included. Uh, widening, uh, turn lanes, all that fancy stuff. So it'll be worth it in the end. And then the other project is the um resurfacing between Divide and Florissant. Where they left off last year. And they will also include from Highway twenty-four to Evergreen Heights. To resurface that as well uh in this project at the same time. So we're going to get two big improvements out of that. So that's what I have to share from PPACG. Um, Carol, are you going to talk about the legislative? Okay, I'll leave that with you. The community events on Saturday, April nineteenth from eleven AM to one PM at Memorial Park. The Divide Mountain Explorers are hosting the Easter Egg Extravaganza in Eight Inches of Snow. No, hold please. There will be fun games, music, free raffle prizes and bunny photos. There is, if there is bad weather. The Eight Inches of Snow, backup day of Sunday for the festivities will be arranged. Stay tuned on social media for updates. So you can find out what's happening with that on social media from Kristen. On Thursday, May first, from one to four at the U-Pass Cultural Center, Pike's Peak Workforce Center is hosting a twen- the twenty twenty-five. Annual Teller County Job Fair. Early access at twelve thirty PM for veterans, active duty, guard, reserve. And their spouses. Come to meet and chat with hiring employers in Teller County. Check out the Pike's Peak Works- Workforce Center website. For more details and resources. And I would just like to wish everyone a very happy Easter weekend. Enjoy your families and we'll have good weather again by Sunday. Catherine?
Um, the UAC didn't meet this month. Um, we were busy with the TAP management last month. Um, and I was absent, so I'm hoping Carol will cover the. Charter for me.
Carol, you're on the deck, Dora.
Um, I do not have any update from Parks and Rec, um, but I would like to take this opportunity to um. Thank everyone who applied for our open vacancy. Um, appreciate everyone's time and your thoughtful answers. Um, I was very impressed uh by everyone. Um, it was nice to get a really good pool of applicants. Um, with that being said, congratulations, Mr. Brian, on your appointment.
Carol?
Okay, we'll start with the Charter Review Committee, which is meeting once a month this time. Um, and Catherine is our chair. Uh, this past month, uh, for April, um, committee is methodically going through. A list of recommended amendment uh changes that could possibly make it to the ballot next uh next April. Um, and some of them have to do with residency requirements for elected officials. Uh, a potential for wards or districts for voting within Woodland Park. I'm not sure. How people feel about that. And if you do have any sentiment on that, please do let let all of us know on the council so we can share that with the committee. Um, but uh, we are working through those. Some, we've already decided that some of them, uh, some of the recommendations could be dispensed. Because they were simply housekeeping issues with the charter itself, which our clerk is able to to address with, along with the city attorney. Uh, but those meetings are the second Wednesday of the month at two thirty upstairs in the plant or in the conference room upstairs. And those are open to the public. And if enough people show up, we'll we'll move to a larger venue. Uh, but we take input uh from the the community, either by email to the council members or to uh Suzanne. Um, or you can uh let us know how you feel about our charter, um, by just coming to the meeting and speaking up. Um, anything else on that one, Suzanne?
You covered it all. Thank you.
Um, and for the next twenty days, our state legislature will still be in session. And you may have seen the article in the Courier this week that talked about some of the highlights thus far. And the reason that we're a little more involved this year is that the city of Woodland Park, along with Fountain and Monument have. Um, obtained or retained a lobbyist to work on issues that are concerned to to communities of our size and. And and the demographics of our community. Uh, so today we uh did get an update from our lobbyist, uh, two of our lobbyists. And uh, what I'd like to do is get consensus from the council um on sending a request to the governor to veto. Two uh bills out of the how, or bills that have made it out of uh legislation are on their way to be signed by the governor. Even though they've got twenty days left in session over the weekend, they'll they'll be celebrating the holidays and will not be in session, but they'll come back on Tuesday. Uh, two bills that have been passed and are ready for uh signature were opposed by uh the three cities that I just mentioned. Uh, because they would have an impact on on our city as well as the other two. One of them is called local government permitting telecommunications facilities. And the reason that this one uh was opposed by us was it allows uh a new request. By a telecommunications provider uh to whatever municipality they want to set up in. If it's not responded to within a sixty-day period, then that telecommunications provider can just go ahead and do whatever it is that they were going to do. Without permits. Uh, for that reason, we opposed it. Uh, we have an opportunity now and it was recommended not only by our lobbyists. But also by the Colorado Municipal League that we send a letter and there's a form that we can uh fill out saying. We think this is not appropriate for our city. Uh, and with the council's uh permission. Uh, I'll work with Aaron to get that letter or to get that uh form letter into the governor's office. The second one that we opposed as a city along with Monument and Fountain was called Electronic Fence Detection System. And that sounds pretty benign on its on its surface, but it basically said that if you were going to have an electronic. Security fence or perimeter around your property, whether it's residential or commercial, you had to have a permit to do so. We don't request permits of any uh or ask anyone to request a permit for a a security detection system. So this is kind of like above and beyond what we do now as a city, a home rule city. Uh, that has passed through the legislature and is on its way to the governor's desk, so we would also like to send a letter requesting that the governor veto that as well. If that's the council's preference. And then a third one that I'll I'll bring up, um, we have some great food trucks here in Woodland Park. Uh, but there is a bill winding its way through the legislature, which I think may be passed that says. Any food truck could show up in Woodland Park and operate without a local license or a requirement to remit taxes. Um, I suppose in some communities that might be appropriate. Uh, but generally for small communities that have a permitting process and the licensing licensing process, that would be a nightmare. Uh, that means that in front of any restaurant in town, an out out of town food truck can show up and just start selling food. Without a a local uh license or permit.
And not remit taxes.
And not remit taxes, exactly. Oh, our our farmer's market, I think would probably go nuts if that would have happened. Uh, so we have chosen to ask our lobbyists to oppose this in committee. Um, and we'll see how that goes. I think we'll get a report on that next week.
Again, these are all issues that impose upon our local control and regulations we already have in place. And they just seem to be insistent and go on and on and on.
Focus for our lobbyists has been those that uh impose on our home rule um.
How are they, how are they justifying the that imposition? In the past, it was health and. Health and safety.
They don't care.
I know, but.
Literally.
They have to use some kind of language. So what's the language being used that is usurping home rule?
I I think it's just economic op- opportunity for these food trucks. Uh, it just doesn't seem that well thought through. And that's one of the reasons that we decided to hire a lobbyist, because a lot of times when the session is over in May. We sit back and go, what the heck happened? And so at least at this point, we're we're joining with these other smaller communities. And I think a couple of other communities are going to also employ the same lobbyist uh to speak up for us. Um, particularly because we are a home rule community.
PPACG has engaged him as well.
So, so um for the staff, we need to find out what that template is for the two that we would ask the uh request for veto.
I'm fine with that, but it just seems like, you know, the barn door is already closed, like we're, you're just yelling at Paulus to veto something which.
Well, maybe he'll listen. He's only got a year left, so who knows?
He has, he has vetoed a few already. It's possible.
But how how, I just don't understand how the, and maybe Betsy doesn't, an offline discussion or something like that, but how? How are they usurping home rule? How are they saying, well, except, you know, home rule can't change this?
Isn't it a pretty simple sentence? They just tack on to the.
It was, but it was health and safety.
Yeah, and you can, you can, the.
But this has.
I'll think about it more articulately, but in short, the state can choose to preempt certain areas. They can, I mean, that's kind of the tension between a lot of it too. Um, is that a lot of this is viewed by home rule municipalities as overreach by the state, and that's a lot of the things, especially as you're doing with CML clauses. They advocate on behalf of smaller constituencies as you all and it's, yeah.
Um, unless you had something else, Erin or or Kelly um on that telecom we did today. Oh, that's old fashioned, the Zoom call we had.
Well, I just want everyone to know that i- it's it's a positive that the weekend is counted, so those days over the weekend. By the time they take, come into session again, they'll have fifteen days left in the session. So that's a, that's a bonus. At least they have those days that they can't go nuts. Thanks, Carol, for for doing that.
Did counsel give consensus?
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It feels like just keeps getting crazier and crazier.
Oh, they have three hundred new bills.
Is there um with this one that's making its way through, is there something we can do preemptively so we're not chasing a veto?
Uh, well, eh eh that is the purpose of having the lobbyists working on our behalf. And and many times CML has done that as well, but um this seems to give us just that much more influence. I I don't know what else we could do aside from uh like our county commissioners and uh our sheriff just going up there and and camping out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and part of that too is when things go through committees and everything, you have an opportunity to object, to testify all those things. It keeps passing, 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 you just keep trying every level. And I'll have Jeff Wilson call you. And you can really, I mean, he just has, I can't beat thirty years.
That's fine. No, 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 it's totally.
You know, I mean, I I will stop when I, you know, but he's he's your expert, so that's going to be the most cost efficient and a fantastic.
Yeah.
Quite frankly. All right, anything else, George?
Uh, I actually had nothing. Um, I was unable to attend the DDA meeting, so once again, I'll defer to Erin. And uh, yeah, I just, I did want to wish everybody happy Easter and uh thank you guys once again for coming out.
Smitty?
Yes.
Do you have anything to share?
Sure.
Okay, we'll go right.
Um, Monday at approximately nine fifty-five. The astronauts on the International Space Shuttle will be talking to our kids at the middle and high school. They'll be inter- you know, interacting, asking questions and, you know, everything, especially with Nicole Ayers. Who is a graduate of Woodland Park. So there what, there are links on uh Facebook and stuff to where people can watch. The kids, you know, talk with uh the astronauts. That's what I got.
That's awesome. Thank you, Smitty. Seth, welcome.
Well, thank you so much. And um, I guess I don't have much to say. I'm new here. Uh, but I.
You are?
Just just slightly. Um, I would like to start off by saying, uh, thank you for your vote of confidence. Um, I will do everything I can for this community. Um, it it really is humbling, especially with the other people that were interviewed and just their absolute quality of character. Uh, to be chosen for this. Um, I look forward to serving Woodland Park. Uh, I also want to say thank you to uh the veterans who came up and spoke about uh the natural medicine and how it's impacted their lives. And other people who have, um, I guess benefited from it and the facilitators. That was very useful for um helping me understand. Know what they were looking for and and some of the specifics. And again, I think it it just took a lot of courage. For those people to share their personal stories and and put themselves out there in front of their community like that, so um definitely thank you to them. Uh, but that's all I have. I I look forward to serving with you.
I forgot to tell you, you got first round.
Oh, yeah. And uh, will Seth be able to attend CML with us?
We're gonna, Erin and I are gonna ask him for a few minutes and we're gonna talk with him after this if we have time, if he has time.
Seth is orientation.
It'll be drinking from a fire hose. Anything else of any of you? Okay, city attorney.
Yes, um, I just wanted to say I appreciated the whole entire natural medicine process. I think it was a great example of. Multiple levels of government working together insofar as it went from here to another, you know, planning commission backup. I think it's a great thing for, if anybody followed it, to see how things can work. Public comment was good and it's a pleasure working on that. Otherwise, I'll see you all soon. Thank you.
Erin?
All right. All right, my first update is on the DDA. So far for the micro grants, we have seven grant applications that have been turned in. We have projects ranging from a retaining wall to outdoor seating to signage. So if you haven't filled out an application, they're due tomorrow by the end of business day. So we still have quite a bit of money there if anybody wants to apply, so go ahead and get them in. Um, I know that Kristen and Kimberly are going to be reviewing those. I think all the changes, if anything additional is needed on those applications. Are due back by May second. And then the DDA is going to consider them at the next meeting on May sixth, assuming it's on that day.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Please describe for me what a certificate of ownership is.
I think it's any proof of ownership that you either own the business or own the building.
And the building would be a deed.
Yeah, so it could be the deed if it's if it's the building itself. If it's a business, then it would be something that shows your articles of incorporation or if it's your LLC.
A good standing.
Yeah, so.
Oh, just the certain of good.
It could be as easy as your state business license.
That's fine. Yeah, it just was not clear. And I had a number of calls today from folks, so I believe you're going to be getting at least four more applications.
Okay.
Good.
And I will say, weather depending tomorrow, the city may be open or not, so we will may have to look at extending that to Monday if we're not open for whatever reason.
I think we're emailing it.
Yeah, well. Like to come in and have uh some assistance, so if we're not able to provide that, we will look to do that on Monday.
Follow social media.
Yes.
You'll be able to see what's going on.
All right, the next update I have is on Berkstrom Park, so we are looking at doing that Berkstrom Park master plan. All right, the next update I have is on Berkstrom Park, so we are looking at doing that Berkstrom Park Master Plan. Um, the first meeting for the advisory committee is going to be on May sixth, so we do have that scheduled. Uh, we have representation from the DVA, from Park and Rec Advisory Board, from Historic Preservation Committee. Uh, from the chamber, and I believe we're also going to look at the U-Pass Historical Society, so. We'll have really good uh representation in these advisory meetings as we move forward, and then hopefully we'll have um some public. Meetings probably the end of June, you know, we're looking at the beginning of summer there, so should see a lot of action on that, so.
What time is that meeting on the sixth?
Um, it's invitation only, so I don't know exactly the time.
All right, I'll follow up with you later.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and then the chamber has asked me to share, uh, first of all, the cultural center has reopened, we had an awesome kickoff reopening on the ninth. And we've already had several events there, they did a phenomenal job, I really like to thank the staff for how, how good it looks, you really can't even tell that they tore the entire ceiling apart, it looks great. Um, but we do have an active shooter training, we're partnering with the chamber on May fifth from eleven thirty to one thirty. Uh, that was very well attended last time, so hopefully it is as well this time. All right, well, wishing everyone a happy Easter, and thank you.
Mayor, yes, ma'am, I just have one thing, um, I wanted to wish the guy in the suit in the back. Tonight is, tonight's Eric's last night with the city, he has taken a job elsewhere and he's moving on. But as council knows, he's been with us the past two years, back there making sure everything ran smoothly, computer-wise. All through the city and everything, and just to let him know that we're all gonna miss him very, very much, and wish him very well in his future endeavors.
I'll miss you too.
Hey, Eric, will you make sure everybody knows that I forget my charger sometimes, and that it's cool if I need to borrow one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, mayor.
Mayor Case.
Thank you.
Sorry. Happening because he's leaving?
No.
Yes, George.
I, I did want to point out, the chief put out his um, uh, report, annual report today. And I don't know, Erin, if you wanted to speak to that, but it was, uh, it was a great report. Um, always well done, and I believe the overall. Um, theme was a reduction in, an overall reduction in crime, although some certain areas did spike. But, um, overall, it looks like we've got a safer town.
Yes, it's two years in a row we're seeing dramatic decreases across the board.
Yeah.
Um, the chief is very much looking forward to presenting that himself, so he doesn't want me to steal his thunder.
Good, well, yeah, I just came out today, so I just want to make sure. Yeah, good. We'll look forward to that.
The chief will do a fantastic job when he presents.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.